Six.
Okay, we'll call the meeting to order. This is the regular meeting of Belavista City Council, October 27, 2025. We'll start with the Bloods, Belages.
Bloods, Belages, to the United States of America and to the Republic for which we stand, one nation under our eye, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Councilmembers Hansel?
Here.
Hart?
Here.
Hughes?
Here.
Newport?
Here.
Wilmz?
Here.
And Isbell?
Here.
The other members here.
Thank you. The first order of business is citizen input. For the rules, there's a three-minute per person time limit to address the council on any topic of that person's choosing. The first person on the list is Maribel Childress of 15 Rath Drive.
Hi, thank you Mayor and City Council. I just wanted to come tonight to say thank you. I am principal of Cooper Elementary School, and I came to speak to Mayor and City Council when I first became principal about 16 months ago to let you know how excited I was to have this role in the community where I live. And now that I've been doing it for a while, I just had to tell you how overwhelmed I am by the community support for Cooper Elementary and just how much we enjoy, how much the community loves on us. And specifically, I want to say thank you to our Belavista Fire Department and our Belavista Police Department for the commitment that they have made to our students and our staff and our school. Just recently, the Fire Department was there for fire safety, teaching our students about all the things they need to do to be safe in an emergency. They are great about coming to eat with students when they have time, bringing their fire trucks and the ambulance and the EMS service for students for career days, and we really appreciate that. And I also want to let you know how very excited our parents and the staff and I have been about the addition of our SRO this school year. Shelby is our SRO, halftime SRO that is provided by the city of Belavista, and I just want to say a real thank you for that. Our parents know this, and it makes them feel great to see her presence and to know that she is there to help our students if there is any need at all. And I have a little bit of knowledge about executive leadership, so I know that you have a finite amount of resources and things that you're required to do, things that you need to do, and things that are just great to do. So I really appreciate you choosing to support Cooper Elementary with your resources and with the SRO. It's something that means a lot, and it makes us feel great to know that she is there. So thank you so much for loving Cooper Elementary.
Thank you. The next speaker is Donna Simmons of St. Asa.
Hi, Matt. Donna is my neighbor, and she asked me to read this. We came to the POA meeting last week, and she's not able to make it tonight. Is that okay that I read for her?
You've got three minutes to say whatever you want to say.
Is that including my three minutes?
So we're using right now, yes.
Okay, well, this is from her.
You can only do it once.
This is from her. "Good evening. Thank you for your time and opportunity to speak this evening. I have been a resident of Belavista for the past four years, thoroughly enjoying the peaceful beauty of our area, as did many generations of my family before me. This is why I was greatly disturbed on the evening of October 11th, when the peace in our neighborhood was overtaken by a very loud disruptive party at Five Hundred Circle. This disruption lasted well past midnight. The following morning, music could still be heard at my residence across the hollow, which is well more than 30 feet from the residents violating city ordinance. I was told law enforcement had been contacted and responded more than once during that evening." Mentioned. "I did not call that evening, but I hope that I can make an online report with the city code enforcement. Since this option is not available, I will be calling the non-emergency line if this occurs again. One reason why this is so disturbing is that I moved from a town in Arizona, which was very different from Belavista, but at the same time very similar in the fact that it's a hotspot for vacationers, retired homes, and recreational visitors. During my former occupation as a police officer, I was called in many of those noise complaints at vacation rentals. And what I experienced the night of October 11th was the same level of disturbance. Oftentimes, the clash between vacation renters and those who had purchased their forever retirement homes volatile. I had an understanding of both sides. A renter was paid top dollar to enjoy vacation, and a resident who purchased their home that has now become located next to a vacation rental and suddenly lost the peace they once enjoyed. If it were possible to require rental owners to include city codes in the rules and the rental contracts, that would be a fair way to let renters know what isn't, isn't acceptable, and what will and won't violate city code. In my former town, there are also permits required for vacation rental owners that can be revoked for repeat ordinance violations. Rental owners were also required to have a local contract available at all times who could respond for repeat law enforcement calls. My hope is that we could come up with a workable plan so that all visitors know the requirements, and we can all enjoy our beautiful area peacefully." Now it's me. "Dude, I live right next to this place. I wasn't invited to the party, but I got to hear it all night. That sucks. Got a nine-year-old child. That disturbance, police came on multiple times. There are over 20 cars that are literally parked on the grass, all four of the tires parked on the side of the grass. Big disturbance. I'd like to make that formal complaint so we can figure out how to fix it. Donna brought some good examples. The other thing I'd like to know is, they have had multiple complaints for their yard. They'll be 24 inches at any given time, and so every three or four weeks, people have to call in and get a tape or something like that addressed to." Thank you.
Thank you. The next item is a council member reply.
I guess one comment is that our STR ordinance does require conclusion of references about making noise and parking vehicles and debris spread around the property, so they are notified by the rules within the STR property itself. So it's not that they're uninformed about it.
Who is the end user who's renting that STR?
Sorry, I can't tell them back.
Hey, what else? Wendy?
I was going to thank Mr. Childress for coming out. I'll see you at work tomorrow. But I agree with you, yes, the community's been an excellent partner with Cooper Elementary, and I'm so glad that our children get to experience our police and fire departments at their very best on a regular basis.
Travis?
I'd just like to reiterate that if there is a complaint at a short-term rental or a private residence that somebody lives in, it's no different. If the police aren't called during the time of that incident, there's not a lot they can do on the back half afterwards. So it's imperative that if you're having issues with a neighbor or a short-term rental, that you call the police during the time of the incident so they can go and do an investigation. And otherwise, there's nothing that any of us can do to do, so.
Okay, I think that concludes the council member reply. I'd like to thank all the people who spoke today. The next subject matter is reports. We have the monthly financial report for the period ending August 31, 2025, and it's pretty positive. The total revenues, operating revenues are up 10% over last year. City sales tax is up 14.1% over last year, so it continues to be encouraging. County sales tax was a little softer. It's up 3.1% over last year. And on the operating expense side, we are almost $1 million under budget through August, so I feel like we're in solid shape so far. Our revenues are more than expected, and our expenses are less than expected. We do have a couple things on the horizon later in the year. There's three. There always are a few months where there's street pay periods. The street pay period is in October, and that has an effect. And at the end of the year in December, all the police and fire get paid their holiday pay for the whole year. So there's still a few challenges ahead of us, but I feel good about our financials so far. The next item is the consent agenda. Well, first, I need to entertain a motion to suspend the rules of order and procedure to allow all ordinances on the agenda to be read by a title holder. That was Larry Wilmz and Craig Hansel. Roll call vote.
Councilmembers Hansel?
Yes.
Hart?
Yes.
Hughes?
Yes.
Newport?
Yes.
Wilmz?
Yes.
And Isbell?
Yes.
Motion carries six to zero. Next item is the consent agenda, and on that is the approval of the minutes from September 22, 2025, and the regular city council meeting of October 15, 2025.
Motion to approve.
That was Wendy and Anna. Wendy Hughes and Anna Isbell. Roll call vote for the motion to approve the consent agenda.
Councilmembers Hansel?
Yes.
Hart?
Yes.
Hughes?
Yes.
Newport?
Yes.
Wilmz?
Yes.
And Isbell?
Yes.
Motion carried six to zero. Next item is unfinished business. It's an ordinance establishing a business license requirement for qualifying businesses operating within the city, providing for classes and exemptions, requiring annual renewal, establishing fees, providing penalties for violations, and for other purposes. This is on third reading, and I believe there's also some proposed amendments.
There are. Originally, three amendments were submitted. The mayor gave me a hard time on a work session this week, so I asked that the third amendment be removed, and that was setting an initial license fee. It's still on the sheet here, but I would ask that we not consider that. I would ask to consider the first two proposals to amend the ordinance individually. There's merit on each of them, but it may vary with the council members as to how they view that item and its importance. So I will submit the amendment to Section 4B to read.
These were provided and included in the back. These were included in the back, so I'm not sure you have to read it all.
That item currently reads charitable and fundraising activities conducted solely for public benefit by schools or city government. And my amendment proposes adding charitable or fundraising activities conducted solely for public benefit would be also included. So as an example, the Belavista Foundation, who has a very charitable and excellent fundraising program every year for the last 15 or 20 years at least, contributed significant funds to all of the nonprofits around Belavista, and they would not be able to function without this amendment because they're not part of the city or a part of the schools. And there are other organizations as well that would not be able to function, would not be exempt under this ordinance if we don't add this provision. So I would make a motion to amend Section 4B.
So if I'm understanding, your motion is to amend 4B to read as provided in the consent agenda. And so what that does, as it's drafted on proposed Section 4B, which is on page two, it currently reads charitable or fundraising activities conducted solely for public benefit by schools or city government. And so practically, what it would do is strike the words "by schools or city government" from that sentence.
Yeah, so it eliminates the limitation. Wendy?
So Larry, I do love this amendment. I think it's a fantastic addition to remove the school and city government portion. I had concerns as well, especially regarding...
Mayor, there's a motion to amend, but there's not been a second, and so there would need to be a second to debate that particular amendment. Or was, Mr. Wilmz, were you going to try and do both of these as one amendment?
We'll do them separately.
Okay. That was a motion by Larry Wilmz and a second by Wendy Hughes.
Now there could be debate on the amendment, so.
Yeah.
Mayor, I had some concerns, and I even wanted to make sure that we didn't add awards nonprofit. I did speak to Jason regarding this to make sure that nonprofits in general would be covered, and based on the definitions of what a business is, nonprofits would be covered others as well. So I felt more comfortable, especially supporting your amendment.
Anna?
So just to clarify, nonprofits would be included as an excluded class?
So, well, if I can answer that, Mayor, in Section 2, we have definitions that we define what a business is. And so the definition of a business in Section 2, it's on the first page, "Business means any trade, profession, vocation, commercial enterprise, or occupation conducted for profit or gain." So if it's not for profit, it's not a business. And so if it's not a business, it doesn't have to get a license. So we're handling it through definition.
Okay, are we ready to vote? Well, do we vote on the amendment first?
If sir wants to base it, include it on the amendment. You can have a vote on it then.
Okay, let's have a roll call vote on the first amendment by Mr. Wilmz.
Councilmembers Hansel?
Yes.
Hart?
Yes.
Hughes?
Yes.
Newport?
Yes.
Wilmz?
Yes.
Isbell?
Yes.
Motion carried six to zero. Larry, would you like to talk about the second amendment?
The last one has to do with short-term rentals, and that's Section 4F. It says, in our short-term rental ordinance, it exempts them from licensing. But I wanted to include or not exclude them because exclude businesses that may do property management, which includes STR properties in that list. And they could argue that, well, we do STRs, so we're exempt. I don't know if that's a valid argument or not, and I would guess maybe the attorney would like to comment about whether that would allow them to be exempt.
Well, your proposed amendment would clarify that property management businesses are not exempt. So that's the purpose. That's what I take from your proposed amendment. The current proposal as it is in Section 4 just exempts short-term rentals as defined in the short-term rental ordinance. So the business of managing those would not be exempt, according to your amendment, if your amendment is adopted.
Travis?
Just for the record, any business that's home-based and that does not have customers coming in now, I will not support a business license for that, so.
And I need to, it's not for me to enter into debate, but it's subsection E, which is not a subject of the proposed potential amendment which has not been moved, exempts home-based occupations. So if it's part of a home-based occupation, it's going to be exempt that way.
Yeah, I see your point there, was you were worried about inadvertently bringing the amendment.
My only other discussion on this is that if you're in a short-term rental business here in Belavista, it's extremely regulated already. There's already fees associated with it. You already have to get licensing. You have to send in financial records monthly to the Advertising and Promotion Commission. So I feel like there's a lot of late work, and there's a lot of cost involved in operating a short-term rental business here. So if you're in the management of short-term rental businesses, and you have to get an additional license with an additional fee to keep track of, I don't support that.
That's not a part of this proposal. This proposal is for property management businesses that do rental of all sorts of things. If a part of their operation includes STRs, that doesn't make them exempt. That's what this provision does. So it doesn't make any STR groups inclusive because they're already exempt by the STR ordinance. What this does do is that if there are property management businesses in the city that include STRs as a part of their portfolio, it wouldn't exempt them. They wouldn't have that as a basis to be exempt. That's all this says. Is that great, sir?
Your amendment, that's the intention, and that's what I intended to write.
That was the intent.
Is there any more discussion?
There needs to be a motion to amend.
Yeah.
And a second.
Motion to amend.
Motion to amend Section 4F to read, amended to add, "Short-term rentals," as defined in the city's short-term rental ordinance, which is already there.
Can I help you out, Mr. Wilmz? It's to, you want to do this, right?
Yep.
Okay. So it would be to amend Section 4F, which currently reads, "Short-term rentals as defined in the city's short-term rental ordinance." It would amend that to read, "Short-term rentals as defined in the city's short-term rental ordinance, property management businesses, even though managing short-term rentals as part of their operation, shall not be exempt." Change or read like that?
Second.
Second, correct?
Second.
Okay, motion by Larry Wilmz and second by Craig Hansel. Roll call vote on the amendment.
Councilmembers Hansel?
Yes.
Hart?
No.
Hughes?
Yes.
Newport?
Yes.
Wilmz?
Yes.
Isbell?
Yes.
Motion carried five to one. We now have the ordinance on business license with the two amendments, and it's on the third reading. Is there any discussion on the ordinance in general?
Just, if I may, I'd like to thank Larry for his diligence, reading through that. There's a lot of information in these brackets to catch. The things that he is able to catch sometimes blows my mind, but good job, Larry. Thank you. And make a motion to, start reading, correct?
It was Craig Hansel to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
It's a second by Shay Newport. Is there more discussion, or do you want to roll call vote?
Yeah.
Shay?
I don't, I think there's definitely discussion, but I'll pause unless the last gentleman.
Okay, Travis?
I'll go first. I don't mind. Just to reiterate that, I'm opposed to this. I don't think it's a terrible idea. I understand. I spoke with the Fire Department, and I understand their angle on this. However, I still think we're to a point where I can support this. I've said it many times, and I'll continue to say it. We need to do everything we can as a city to increase businesses here in Belavista, because that's how we're going to get enough funds to provide the services that our citizens deserve. I don't think we're going to get it by increasing taxes and fees and licensing. And this is just another step, another red tape, another license, another fee to get a business up and running here in Belavista. And I think right now, we should focus on making it easier and cheaper and more streamlined.
Larry Wilmz?
I guess my view, and I've stated it at the work session, is that I don't believe this proposal adds any value to any of our businesses in Belavista existing, or any value to a future business coming to Belavista. It's a convenience for our departments, but my feeling is, is that if you're a business owner, you need to be responsible and know what the rules are. If you don't understand the rules, maybe you shouldn't be in your business. So it makes the owner responsible for negligence or missing opportunities, which have been recited by our police chief and planning director in the past, Mr. Wilmz, that proposed this.
Okay, Wendy?
So our state currently not having this permit has not been as a beacon or a safe haven for businesses to land here. If it had, we'd have businesses left and right knocking out doors to kind of Belavista. And we've got other issues that cause roadblocks for that, but us not having a business license requirement has not been the green light for people to come here and want to land here. That's also another wall box, what we need to change and do to actually get businesses here, to entice them, to court them, to make them want to land here. I do, if my colleagues are agreeable to it, we'd like to maybe push this off for a month, for us to really sink into it and make sure, if we're going to pass them, that it's the exact rule we need to pass after the first go and not make changes to it later. And so if people are agreeable to it, I'd like to table this for one more month to give them more time.
Mayor, there's already a motion to approve and a second, so that would not be in order at this time.
Okay. Thank you for your discussion. I would like to point out that Taylor Robertson provided you with a list of what all the other cities do, and every last one city in the entire area has this. The only cities that don't have a business license are little tiny places. And Ridgewood, Stanville, Bentonville, and Springdale all have it, and they seem to be tracking businesses just fine. Travis?
With that point, Mayor, I'd like to point out that the point of the business license is to track businesses so you know exactly how many are in your city, and we were not able to... And we were not able to be provided with how many businesses are in those cities. And so, it defeats the purpose of having the license if you can't track them. I got, I asked for a list of how many businesses are in those cities, and we did not get a complete list.
From, from, you mean you asked the city, how many businesses they had?
I, yes, I asked Director Robertson. So, I may have explained that bad, but basically, the point of the business license is to track how many businesses you have, or if they're coming or going. I asked for a number of how many businesses those cities that require a business license have, and we weren't able to get that number.
Shay?
I thought I'd asked for it, and I don't remember asking her, but maybe you asked off to the side, but just so that it's, yeah, I don't want it to seem like she didn't just be assigned, she meant my, she meant my request, so maybe that's what was sent out. If, I have a question for Mr. Kelly. If we, I know we need to vote on the ordinance and tabling it is now not an option, right?
You vote.
But if we voted, I'm sorry. And however, if we do vote it down, we can also pick it back up where you said.
Well, if, if, if the person who moved to approve that wants to withdraw their motion and the person who's seconded is willing to withdraw their second?
Okay.
Then you can get to a position where you could table it if you want, without having a final vote at this time.
Okay.
So, I'd like to remove my motion.
You're withdrawing your motion to approve?
Yes.
And then who made the second?
I also withdraw.
Okay. Mayor, I'm not running the meeting, you've got to do it.
Now, someone wants to make a motion to table it. Wendy Hughes?
I'd like to make a motion to table the ordinance for one month. Second.
Okay, so that will be to be heard at the regular meeting in November?
Yes, sir.
So, that was Wendy Hughes and Shay Newport. Roll call vote on the motion to table the business license.
Councilmembers Hansel?
Yes.
Hart?
No.
Hughes?
Yes.
Newport?
Yes.
Wills?
No.
Isbell?
Yes.
Motion to table carried four to two. Thank you for the discussion. The next one is an ordinance D establishing respective cost sharing of health benefits between the city of Bella Vista and certain police department, fire department retirees, and their dependents, and this has been tabled until October. Travis, I had the impression at the work session you wanted to withdraw this, but I'm open to whatever you want to do.
Yeah, I would like to withdraw that, or I'm not going to change the motion for that, I'll go to the eighty-five eligibility standpoint.
So, Mayor, what we've got to do is we need to table that indefinitely if we're not going to consider it.
Yeah, okay.
Or table it to a day's service.
I just wanted to make sure what his motivation was, you know, give him a chance.
Oh, thank you, Mayor.
I'll move to table it indefinitely.
Okay.
Second.
That was Larry Wills and Wendy Hughes, motion to table resolution D indefinitely. Any more discussion? Shay?
I just want to make sure that Travis feels that he's heard before we table something indefinitely.
Yes, I appreciate it.
I'm here for you, okay.
Okay. Roll call vote.
Councilmembers Hansel?
Yes.
Hart?
Yes.
Hughes?
Yes.
Newport?
Yes.
Wills?
Yes.
And Isbell?
Yes.
Motion carried to table it indefinitely, six to zero. Now, we're in the new business, next one is an ordinance waiving the requirements of formal competitive bidding and authorizing a contract with Superior Automotive Group in the total amount, not to see, hundred twenty-eight thousand, three hundred fourteen dollars for the purchase of two twenty-twenty-five Ford F-250 trucks for use by the police department. And there's a little discussion of this at the work session, and Tim Cook gave us a little summary. Would you like to hear more about it or discuss it? Travis?
I would just like to say that I was, I was not going to support this until I heard his explanation, so I feel pretty good about this purchase, though.
Shay Newport?
I don't see it in here, but his staff asking for a third and final on this.
I think they are, Mayor.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah. Yeah, they had been communicated, but it could go third and final because I'm motivated.
Just, just to confirm with the chief, this is budgeted item, correct?
Yes, correct.
I would move to waive the rules and move to third and final reading.
Sorry, suspend the rules?
That was Larry Wills and Craig Hansel was the second. Any more discussion? Okay, roll call vote on the motion to waive the rules and...
Suspend the rules.
Suspend the rules and move to third and final reading.
Councilmember Hansel?
Yes.
Hart?
Yes.
Hughes?
Yes.
Newport?
Yes.
Wills?
Yes.
And Isbell?
Yes.
Motion carried six to zero, all rated for the third and final time. Waiving the requirements of formal competitive bidding and authorizing a contract with Superior Automotive Group in total amount, not to see, hundred twenty-eight thousand, three hundred fourteen dollars for the purchase of two twenty-twenty-five Ford F-250 trucks for use by the police department.
Motion to approve, second.
That was Craig Hansel and a second by Larry Wills. Roll call vote.
Councilmembers Hansel?
Yes.
Hart?
Yes.
Hughes?
Yes.
Newport?
Yes.
Wills?
Yes.
And Isbell?
Yes.
Motion carried six to zero. Thank you very much for that. Next one is an ordinance amending the Bella Vista zoning ordinance in map to rezone property describing rezoning petition number twenty-twenty-five dash five-nine-nine-four-oh, county parcel number sixteen dash four-three-two-six-nine dash zero-zero-zero from RE residential state district to C two local commercial. The petitioner is here and would like to make a brief presentation. Mr. Keough, would you like to come up?
Thank you, Mayor, and council members. Thank you for the opportunity to present before you. My name is Jack Keough. That's my wife Riley and our daughter Esther back there. I first came to Bella Vista ten years ago and love Bella Vista. And my wife and I recently purchased a home close to Lake Windsor. And today, my hope is to present before you in hopes of changing the zoning on a parcel that we purchased from residential estate to commercial. So, I made a presentation, which, yeah, is shown here. I think there's a big need for more commercial development in Bella Vista, as we were previously discussing. And in, on the economic development page, it cites the 2018 consultant study estimating that there's one hundred and thirty-seven million spent annually on retail by current residents, and one hundred and twenty-nine million of those dollars are being spent outside of Bella Vista. And losing, losing that spend just suggests that there might be a gap in the local services in compared to other cities nearby us. And, so if we could go to the next slide. I think Bella Vista can be gaining from these commercial dollars that are being spent elsewhere, and we can further promote business here in Bella Vista and retain that spend. This graph on the top just shows the number of restaurants in Bella Vista in comparison to Bentonville and Rogers. You can see that there's on TripAdvisor around twenty-five or so restaurants here in comparison to two hundred and twenty-five in Bentonville, which, yes, Bentonville has a larger population, but it's slightly less than double. And so, if we were to compare where Bella Vista would be in comparison to Bentonville, you can look at the second graph, and that would be the number of restaurants here in Bella Vista. And since 2020, there's been an eleven-point-nine-one percent population growth, and so I think that there is a need for more restaurants and coffee shops. Yesterday, my wife and I were at Table Upon, and they turned people away just because it's busy. And I think that there's opportunity for other restaurant stalls to be able to help service the residents here in Bella Vista. If you can go to the next slide. This is one potential use. I had a rendering and a site plan created that could go on this property, which is, once we go to the next, I'll show you where the property is located, but it's right across from the Village Center, which is where Bella Vista's table is. And I think it could be a great location for a small restaurant or a coffee shop that could serve the needs here of residents and further promote growth, as well as commercial tax dollars, and could become like a cool spot like Onyx or Airship, like some cool little coffee shop here in Bella Vista.
Sir, I want to, I told you representative visit the work session?
Yeah.
When we're talking about a rezoning, they can't really consider a specific use that you may propose, they have to look at all potential uses.
Okay.
The information you volunteer is what you wish to volunteer, but they can't base their decision on one, any one particular use, that they're going to look at the entire code, and I just want to make sure you understand.
Okay, yep, thank you. And as we can see here, this is based on a major arterial road on Lake Tishire, directly across from C two commercial. And it is called the Village Center, which I think makes sense as a place to add more commercial as the city grows outside of commercial, so it is directly across from commercial and then adjacent to two other residential estate. If you could go to the next one, please? Here's just showing it from the other side, and then you could go to the next. There were a few issues brought up at the last meeting, and I just would like to address those issues. I've also spoken with two of the neighbors, one of which shared last meeting, Darren Callahan, we spoke for forty-five minutes on the phone. He is the one directly to the right, if you're looking up at it, he owns that house, and him and his wife shared at the last council meeting, some concerns around privacy. And so, I've discussed with him that I'm very happy to help increase, like, I know in the city plans that there are already codes for commercial next to residential, but I have talked with him that I'm very happy to increase tree buffers and to help with privacy concerns with the neighbors next door. And then I also, I know that there was an email sent in around, someone had concern, a resident had concerns around marijuana store or adult entertainment, something like that. And I would like to propose to self-restrict. I personally would not want that to happen. And so, I'm proposing self-restricting to no liquor store, marijuana store, or adult entertainment on this rezon.
So, are you saying you're offering a bill of assurance to the council?
That could be, if that would be the best route to...
You're the one talking. I just want to make sure you...
Go ahead.
And then, so two properties over, I spoke to one of the neighbors who has two properties over to the east, and Randy Robach, and he, he's at six-three-three West Lake Tishire. His is zoned commercial in the county. And, and so, and his is also next to, adjacent to residential, and then across the street, the Village Center is C two and is adjacent to residential as well. And so, I think that the code kind of prepares for this situation where there's going to be residential next to residential. And then if you could go to the next one. As far as depography, those are some concerns that were raised. With a smaller development, there is, it is flatter in the center, in the front of this parcel. And it would be possible to develop something with not that much grainy, but I am prepared to grade the parcel. And then, if you could go back to the other slide, there was a third slide.
Oh, what?
Utilities. Oh, it's on it. Another concern was utilities, which is on your, I have this slide on your, I believe it's on the pamphlet I sent. But I spoke with Centerton Water, with Centerton Utilities, and I was told over the phone, she thought that we could pull water, it would be a developer cost across, because across the street they're being serviced from a water perspective from Centerton Utilities. I'm still waiting to hear back in an email further detail on that. But then an additional route would be to create, to put an septic in a well, which we're prepared to do as well. So, those are the reasons that I wanted to present my requests to rezon to commercial.
Travis?
Thanks for your presentation. I'm a avid supporter of small businesses here, I don't know if you've heard me say that even in this meeting, but my only issue with this, and if there was a way that you could legally, you know, offer us assurance on the type of business, that would be fantastic with your proposal, and you would have to come up with that, I think. But I made an amendment to this that I would be supporting tonight if you were interested. And it just basically takes it from a C two to a C one. And then I would, I would just vote, you would give my vote for C one tonight, but I'm only one vote, so.
Wendy?
Could I piggyback on that? Why did you choose the intensity of C two opposed to CR or C one?
I was encouraged by someone that because it's a cross from C two, that it would most naturally make sense to go for a rezon that was the same as where it was a cross from. But I'm open to C one, that was just the reason that I proposed the C two.
Wendy?
And then Taylor, what is CR again?
More for origin.
Okay.
Larry?
Yeah, I guess a couple of comments relative to your proposal and presentation, Mr. Keough. Restaurants in Bella Vista versus Bentonville Rogers. Bella Vista was created by a developer buying a huge quantity of land and planning for it originally, I think, to be retirement homes, meaning people would be here only half a year, part of the year. And so, he did not provide commercial space commensurate with this being a planned city with a normal, normal population distribution, okay? So, as a result of that, with part-time people being here, businesses could not function unless they had year-round operations, year-round customers. And so, there wasn't the development of restaurants in Bella Vista, and there still isn't today because we still have quite a few who have become accustomed to shopping for restaurant food outside of our city. And so, that's, that's one of the reasons we don't have a lot of restaurants here, we don't have a lot of space that was originally provided for, okay? The other thing would be, what you're suggesting to do is rezon a piece of residential property that's between two other residential properties and adjacent to more residential properties to the south. Some in the business might call this spot zoning, and I don't know that, whether that's the classification or not, that it could be used and applied here. Suggesting that you would like to put in a coffee shop, if we were to base our decision upon that, would be a contract zoning, and that's illegal in all states. Screening, the screening of the property from the neighbors and whatever is provided by our development code, and it's very explicit about what it requires when you're next to another business, residence, a public entity, whatever. So, if you're covered there, you don't have to commit to that, they'll take care of it when the project comes in for approval. Utilities, water and sewer. I don't know that that land was owned by Cooper. I think that was not a part of the Cooper acquisition, so it can't be serviced by Cooper's Bella Vista water system. Bellavista water system. So it likely falls upon the original rural water district that serves that area and the shopping center across the street from you. South and east of where you are and west of where you are is served by the old rural water district water authority number one in Benton County, which was acquired and purchased by Centerton Utilities, and so they operate that now. For sewer, I don't know that there's any regulation about the sewer. If it's available in the area, they're an independent private utility, and I think that if they can get access to put it there, they may be able to serve you. You can consult with them.
Travis? Just wanted to remind the council that C1 is commercial residential. I think that's how it's stated. So it's, to me, it fits perfectly with what he's trying to, where he's trying to put this business. And we've, we've got to be the only city of 35,000 people in Arkansas without a coffee shop. I know we have to make this to where it fits any business with C2, I understand that. So that's why I wanted to propose this amendment that goes to the C1, and I believe that's commercial residential. Am I saying that right, Taylor?
Commercial, it's neighborhood commercial.
Neighborhood commercial, sorry.
Shay, you have a word?
Just a couple of clarifications. We could let us go to two more readings, correct?
Yes.
Okay, and then it is a little confusing, I think, for probably everyone since we've adopted new codes that won't go into effect until December.
So this is, this would not take effect until after the effective date of the new code, and so that's been taken into account? And so you would be looking at the schedule of uses in the new C2 currently or the new C1? There's not been an amendment offered yet, but so you'd be looking at that schedule of uses?
And there's also a CR in the new one as well, right? Okay. So then that's an even less intense usage than line.
Mayor, it may be helpful for Taylor to be able, since there was a presentation, to tell the council what this is about.
I'd love to speak, to have Taylor speak as well. Thank you, Jack.
Yeah, thank you.
Appreciate it very much.
Thanks so much.
Very nice, very nice presentation.
Thank you.
You made me try to abstain too.
I'm happy to take any questions you guys may have, but I gave a pretty thorough overview during the work session of this request. The packet that you guys have before you does have C2, local commercial with the new code for your review, and as well as the planning commission review both because we predicted this exact situation won't happen. So we wanted to consider both at the time of the public hearing, and then the local commercial C2 is provided for your table uses, and that is what is being considered. There is another option as well that hasn't been discussed. It was discussed well before, pre-application. Everyone keeps talking about use specific. The only use specific application that you guys can consider, one specific use, is something called a planned industrial district. That is when they disclose the entire master development. They enter a contract agreement with you all. You need to see exactly what's going to be developed before you guys approve the rezon. So it's approved at the same time. Other than that, we must consider all uses within the table.
And so that, that's one thing I need to add, because I asked a question about whether he was offering a bill of assurance, and I need to tell the council what that's about. We've never done that here before. It's something that could be done. Somebody seeking a rezoning could offer. We can't request it, and we can't mandate it, but could offer what's called a bill of assurance, which would basically give the city some protection from certain uses that otherwise would be allowed in the zone that would prohibit it. So he mentioned a bill of assurance that would preclude liquor stores and adult entertainment venues. I asked, I'm not entirely sure that those would even be allowed in a, in a C2 or a C1, but did we get an answer to that question?
Adult entertainment is only allowed conditionally as approved by the planning commission, and the industrial district is not allowed.
So that would be of no use to you. Liquor stores, I don't...
I didn't have any more time to confirm.
And so then really the point there is if they offer a bill of assurance, they need to do that in writing. We need to see it and know what the terms of those are, and that becomes a factor that you can consider. They're wanting to talk to us.
Oh, just had a question. So the bill of assurance, would that mean basically the de-restriction or what?
Basically, yes.
So it would follow new owners?
Yes.
Travis? Yeah, we have an entrepreneur here that wants to open up business in Bellavista. I think we ought to do whatever it takes to get that done. I like what Taylor presented as another option from here, but is, could you tell us, Taylor, is C1 more appropriate there?
C1 is less intense. You have actually three options that are less intense than one he's requested. C1, commercial recreation, and then trail oversight, trailside overlay, which is very specific in uses in mill that addresses outdoor lending, coffee shops, restaurants, things like that, things that are not within small residential areas as well. So you actually have three options if you're just looking for a less more, more or less intense use than C2.
Is the...
Wendy?
Is the TSO the most restrictive?
It's the...
Or CR? Which one would?
Least amount of uses?
Yes.
That's going to be TSO.
Okay, okay.
What about the water situation? I saw you shaking your head back there.
Yeah, I called, and this was one of the pieces of information they gave at the work session as well, but this piece of property doesn't have access to Centerton water or POA water. It's in the area because of the village shopping center across the street, but Centerton said this parcel is not within their service area.
They service the area to the south of this?
They said that it would not provide service to this parcel.
Okay.
From what we did in our research. So this most likely would need ADH approval for a well and some type of on-site waste water management. And if it's commercial, at least it's probably not going to be applicable to that.
Thank you for the clarification, Taylor.
Hey. Travis?
So why not let the business owner worry about that?
One of the requirements that staff has to present suitability for development, and so that's why that was presented, is as well as the depagography concerns.
I, I thought that Shay had a good point that this is first reading, and it says it seems to be a complicated situation. Shay?
I do have one other question, just because I'm not, I know there's like an application and there's certain ask. I guess this question's to Mr. Kelly. And Travis proposed an amendment about C1, but would amendments work in this case? Could, if we want, can council propose amendments for TSO?
The city can, the council has the authority to zone it however it sees fit. So you have the full authority to, to zone it. I mean, the, the process has gone through planning commission, there's been a public hearing, but you ultimately determine what the zone is.
Except for PTD, that is not an option.
Thank you.
Well, yeah.
And then, sorry, one other question. Hold on, I lost it. Buffering one second. No, I'll come back, sorry, I forgot.
Wendy?
Just for clarification, our proposed changes for the zoning would have to be amendments, correct, some amendments?
The current proposal is to go from RE to C2. If you want to go to any other zone, you're going to have to have a motion to amend, go through that process, and then finish through readings and final approval, just like any other ordinance.
Perfect, thank you.
Shay?
I remembered. Just for the benefit of everyone, I know this is in the packet, but can you tell us what this parcel is deemed under our future land use that we did just adopt last one?
The zoning? Okay, the zoning has, is already a residential state as well. Future land use is a little bit different. Future land use has this designated as a future neighborhood, but it is within a type two node on the outskirts of it. And that is time to go out and establish one as well. Our type two Village Center node should be most intense at the intersection of 279 and 340, and then less intense on its way out.
Travis? Mayor, is there any way the city can work with the applicant and get some more options on the table, get them to present that in the next work session?
What do you mean by other options? Because we cannot get into specific uses.
Okay. I was just trying to think of a way we could, you know, if he wanted to present like the full plan, whatever that was called.
We did discuss PTD at the pre-adj. That was one of the options we discussed. But we can't, staff can't amend at this point or any business, all within your guys' role at this point.
So on our table, okay. I'll get with the applicant, and I'll, I'll bring something to the work session hopefully.
Wait a minute. To do what? Because we're legally bound, I'm not just being a pain here, there are legal reasons why we can't do this specifically.
All right, well then I will, I will motion to amend to, move to the C1.
So there's a motion?
There's a motion to amend to C1. Is there a second? No, it's your last one, second. So Wendy?
You can offer, offer that in the next one or at another time in the future.
I like this two or three readings. It seems a very complicated issue. I think we all agree that we do need more commercial businesses in Bellavista. We all want to see that grow, we want to see that commercial tax base grow, but we also want to make sure that we are doing right, doing it the right way. I did have another question. Have we looked at traffic studies that could possibly entail having turning traffic, higher density traffic going in different directions?
There has not been a traffic study typically. That's done at the time of large scale.
Okay.
So this is, this is waiting for that. Yeah.
Usually when you can't get water and the planning commission voted it down six to one, you don't feel like you're ready to go to a traffic study yet. Larry?
I guess I, I could look back at the planning commission when they considered this, and they had viable reasons for not supporting it, and I, I cannot support the proposal, whether it's C1 or C2. I think it fits into spot zoning, it fits into contract zoning in some regards because of what we've heard and what we presented. Are we voting because of something that has been presented to us? The fact that it doesn't have water or sewer utility access for commercial is going to make it difficult for marketability if this is, if this owner chooses to sell it. Commercial places need public water and public sewer to be viable. That's in Bellavista, that's anywhere where it's available. There are communities that rely solely on private wells and septic systems, but we're not one of those, even though we have them in our community. So I can't support any proposal at all, and I'm on the side of the planning commission not supporting it.
Craig?
Well, that's, Larry very much sums up my feelings on it too, because that's, anytime I consider anything, do I want to live next to it? And is it safe? And until those two, I can rationalize those two criteria. I mean, if there's a bill of assurance that where we can guarantee screening, noise, et cetera, things that impact, I know, I know we can't. But that's what I'm saying, is that those are the concerns that I have, see, before I get painted as the, you know, I'd love to see small businesses. I think it's great. But the challenge to this is kind of location, and that's, I didn't know what the criteria was for like a traffic study. I knew, I didn't, I didn't know if we were into that realm. But as proposed, I'm, I'm going to have a struggle with it. It doesn't mean that I'm not going to do the labor. I need to talk to neighbors, see how they feel, and all that kind of stuff. So I mean, it is, you know, this is the first time, first reading, so anything can happen. Thank you for the proposal. You did great.
Okay.
One last comment.
Larry, go ahead.
I want to thank you, thank Mr. Kito for, for having the creative thought to bring this forward, to rezon it, to make it into something that would benefit the city. I think he needs a compliment for that. The reality is that I don't think it's a good plan for this particular site. No water, no sewer, it's going to be difficult for you. If you develop this, it's going to be extremely difficult to sell it, and it's a commercial property. So not only that, but it's sandwiched between two existing residential houses, and they would not be pleased with whatever would go in there, so.
Okay, I think we'll let it go to the second reading, and maybe people can think, can think about it. But I do thank Mr. Kito for his presentation. Very helpful. The next one is a resolution establishing a health insurance premium credit for eligible police and fire department retirees and their dependents based upon the rule of 85 eligibility standard. And this was proposed by myself and HR helped write it up. I spoke to human resources about it, and they were very helpful. And I was going under the philosophy of, you know, one side wants this, the other side wants nothing, so maybe the answer is somewhere in the middle. It was general philosophy, so. I don't know if anybody wants to comment on it, or...
I just think that, I have a question for HR. How, how confident are you of the projections that were presented for us to review for the, this proposed resolution? Pretty confident about that based on what we have now?
She's important to me. Is it on? Yeah, I've looked at it several different times. It is very limited in the number of people that will ever qualify for it because as it's the rule of 85, it's age plus years of service. Fire police can retire quite young if they start young, and so a lot of people choose to retire prior to even getting there. The reason some of these people will be eligible, but I looked at and counted in that count, excuse me, allergies. Part of the reason for those people being eligible is they have service from their time of the POA as well, including in their age plus years of service calculation.
The same really would apply to the other ordnance that we withdrew, the one that councillor Travis Hart presented. That would have a limited...
Yes.
...participation as well.
Yes.
But the cost to the city would be much different.
Because more people would qualify under that.
Right, so. Thank you for, for clarifying.
Any other comments?
Much different. Second.
That was Greg Hanzel and Larry Wills. Roll call vote.
Councilmember Hanzel?
Yes.
Hart?
Yes.
Hughes?
Yes.
Newport?
Yes.
Wills?
Yes.
And Isbell?
Yes.
Motion carried six to zero. Thank you for that. The last one is a resolution amending the 2025 budget to authorize one additional full-time building inspection position in the fire department. We talked about this a little bit at the work session, and the fire chief and Roger Geyer, the chief building official, went back and studied it and thought that a budget amendment wouldn't be necessary because for the rest of this year, it's just a month or two, you know, plenty when you hire the person, so they think they can do it with their existing budget. So it's just, the vote is just to add a person. Travis?
Yeah, I've spoke with both of them at length with this in detail. I support this. There's an issue getting these, these builds off the ground running. We talked to the mayor about it. People are sitting on job, you know, two to four weeks without many progress. That's expensive. They pass that on to the buyer. It's expensive to keep your construction workers actively engaged on your site through the work they can do until they get the inspection for the next phase. So I support this. I think it's, it's, it's no longer a desire to me.
Motion checked with Wendy?
Second.
That was Wendy Hughes, Greg Hanzel. Go ahead, Larry. Would you like to discuss?
Why don't you guys do that?
Well, you can still discuss after the motion is...
Okay.
Go ahead.
All right. My, my thought being is that in my experience, the building inspection program, the key people in there are funded by the fees and rates for the permits that are issued. So I don't know if we're doing that. I've heard from the outside that maybe our rates are not high enough, contrary to the builders' complaints about how high they are to build in Bellavista. Part of that has to do with two layers. You have a ACC which regulates the outside of the building, our structure, and you have us who bring... us who regulates the outside and the inside. So it's a matter of, it's a matter of how really is it, and if you count both of them, we're probably higher, but I think our fees itself should support our inspection team, maybe not the director or manager for it, but the inspection team, it should cover the cost of all of the reviewing staff, not to, not to planning commission, but the reviewing staff internally that do reviews of plans and projects. So that would be my comment about it. My question, my other question is, while we, our budget this year can afford hiring one now, will we be able to afford an additional person in this capacity next year? Because this year we're, we have a budget that's currently $800,000 under, underwater.
Yeah, we, well, we do, did have this person in the budget that the rough draft that's presented to you had this person in it.
But that was in the final version.
Oh yeah, we had the final version, yeah, that's why I said the rough draft version.
Oh, you're talking about the 2026 budget.
Yeah, we were anticipating hiring this, and, you know, the need is so great that building community has really gotten super active and there's a lot of pressure to do something about the inspection situation. It's become a daunting task because it's kind of like it was a rocket ship that was going up, and puppets really going up, it's just getting faster and faster. Travis?
I disagree with the fees. I think this is a situation where we need more businesses and more sales tax, that's how we want it.
I did that, there was personally, the last meeting or the meeting before, it was a builder who basically got up and said all of our fees were way too low, if you recall. He didn't miss any words about it, I thought that was interesting.
We have a complex of other builders, but that's.
Yeah. Okay, I think we're ready for a roll call vote.
We have a motion, second.
Yeah, you hit the motion second already.
Councilmember Hanchel?
Yes.
Hart?
Yes.
Hughes?
Yes.
Newport?
Yes.
Wills?
Yes.
Isbell?
Yes.
Motion carried six to zero. Thank you for that. Announcement, the next city council work session is 5:30 PM on Monday, November 17 at Vela Vista, then it's at the district court. Next city council regular meeting is 6:00 PM, Monday, November 24 at Vela Vista District Court. Planning commission work session, 4:30 PM, Thursday, October 30 at Vela Vista District Court. Planning commission regular meeting at 4:30 PM or immediately following this BCA meeting, Monday, November 10 at Vela Vista District Court. Board of Construction field, 3:00 PM, Wednesday, November 12 if necessary, at fire station number four, compass room 1639, Forest Hills Boulevard. If there's not anything else, we'll return. Thank you.